I seen Travis at the store earlier.
Thomas.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Good to see you.
You too.
Does the meeting already started?
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just here.
Okay. Let's see. Hello, hello. Doing here in Kula. How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir. Nice to meet you, Thomas.
Yeah, that's okay. You doing okay?
He sure.
How's your neck?
Good. Good, hot out there. I'm doing, uh, legs doing better, yeah, most definitely. Doing great, hell it up, I'm back to... Getting around great, thank you for asking.
My yard looks good.
Thank you.
My yard always looks good. Yeah, now her and I'll get out the weed.
Oh, weed eating, I, 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 you know, I don't mind. I just gotta break out the old weed eater and make sure he still, make sure she's still kicking.
What did she tell them for Mother's Day?
Oh.
She said, are you serious? I'm like, yes. I want a bad weed on my brain. I have, I have an industrial one that you push like a, like a regular.
She's got one.
Yes.
Feel so good in here.
One time I was talking to somebody and he was six feet. And I was like, he weirded up and I said, chop, chop, chop.
Send me off, probably seen these already, but... Little better close-up look here.
Thomas, this is the pictures I found out. Mr. Duncan didn't want to get over your head back up on the air.
Oh, okay. Yeah, they, they like to see him on live, so... Doing, doing, doing good. See you, good to see you. Doing good, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mary is.
And this is, this is Jason now. He's in the front. This is in the back.
There, I'll go show y'all some of these, some of y'all may have not seen them since I'm live here. These are all of Otter Creek back in the 1940s. And this one is 1902. Pretty cool. And this is Donald Smith's store. Pretty cool. Hey, Mo, how are you? We are right here. Right there. Parked right there. That was the first time I met him. Excuse me. That's the first time I seen him and met him. So I don't... He seems like a nice guy, so... Sun's bright. Read some comments here. They got the ceiling painted. Hello Betty, hello Mary, hello Connie. 6:47. Thirteen minutes. Yes, it does look good in the town hall. Hello Granny Kathy. Hello CJ. Hit that thumbs up button for me, please. Look, I guess some people are gonna get sworn in. Just look at the name tags. That's meats. Black swans. Ray's and Howard, that's the new clerk. This is... Sorry, down there. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you're good. I'll sit right next to you, Mr. John. You're absolutely fine. Yeah. You sure? Okay. Thank you, Mr. John. Get a little better English. Evidence, I have no clue. Are you done, Miss Laura? How are you? Howdy, howdy. Michael, I'm not sure, I'm not sure Michael R. Used to him. Thank you, Mo. Few people showing up. You got Travis back here. Hello. It's definitely hot here. Feels great in here. You wanna see the agenda? Agenda here. How are you? How you doing, Rex? How are you? 6:54. There's the attorney. Um, no. Think this is the meeting that gets sworn in, or he does. Can y'all see everything good? Hear me? Hit that thumbs up button, hit that thumbs up. Yeah, sounds always iffy and... Thank you. How is everybody tonight? Hello, hello. Splenda's over here. She, she retired, I think. I'll ask her later. Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Two minutes. Russell. And Mr. Carl. Hit that thumbs up button. Yes, Vice Mayor's missing. Or he's not here.
The pleasure to be here today, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, I put it on in, if you had one tonight, you could slip in the box here, get that filled out, so that you can call it up at that time. All right, we got, um, approval of the agenda? First and second question, all in favors.
Aye.
Okay, so that's the names. For the minutes, for the meeting, the main four teams. I'll repeat it under this, do you want to hear yourselves? I'll begin and agree with the objections, okay? You ready, Michelle, to accept? Since she wasn't there, I didn't say a question. All favors, odd, odd, yes. Okay, we got, um, our guest speakers. We have, um, Waukesha Sassa Water, um... Ask if we can get the filters to dry.
I thought I can wake up in, yes.
Well, if you have the filters to dry, I'll give you a chance to pick first to do.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And I do have other copies of the presentation that you all will have. Somebody from the public wants to?
You can take one. It's all packed in.
So I'll walk through the presentation to the minds of... Good evening. It's the name of the President's Council. My name is Claire N. Gates. I'm a professional media and water management issue captain. I vote that she is the woman who made the agenda. I'm here standing for Lee Warren Marshall, who unfortunately drove away yet today because his council meeting was... Uh, we're gonna make it today. Um, I'm here to announce an important meeting happening in July with the Waukesha Sassa Watership Floodments Review Meeting. And before I get into that, I do want to take this outreach opportunity and read a statement from DEP. Uh, we did look at it. So responsible entities must submit a sufficient list of additional projects and management strategies to DEP by January 14th, 2026, to be compliant with the upcoming BMAP council or be subject to further department enforcement. If any entity is unable to submit a sufficient project list and specific project identification efforts must, I am stated, must reflect the urgency of defining, funding, and implementing projects beneath the upcoming and future months. These planning efforts are ineligible for FEMA credit themselves but are necessary to demonstrate the additional eligible management actions worthy forthcoming in BMAP compliance will reach them. So in short, further department environmental protection as a BMAP bid like January 14th, 2026. So we're actually denying the Waukesha Sassa. So on that second slide, you can see the Waukesha Sassa watershed in the state, some areas of Alamo County, Deuphers County, and Lead County, including the town of Otter Creek. We'll move to the next. Uh, it shows the project timeline. We did have, we were supposed to have the basic flood review meeting in April of this year, but we had to pause our CTP, uh, work, which is the FEMA work. Um, we've been partnered with FEMA as a cooperative technical partner, CTP, uh, for many years, and we had to pause work between March and April because we were changing things that they were doing, and so we had to push our, our whole schedule. And so, but we did come here back in July 2021 for something called a discovery, which is when we said, hey, we're gonna study this watershed. What areas should we focus on? Where do we get the most complaints and so on and so on? And that's what kind of gave fruit to this watershed study. So we go to the next slide. Um, we take this flood review meeting is to obtain feedback from both, from residents, but then also for city and county officials, um, in the development of these maps. So feedback received during this meeting will be used to fine tune these maps. FEMA requires only community officials to provide comments, but the district sees the value in the public also being involved. An example is when we did the Santa Fe a couple of years ago, we got over a thousand comments. And you have to go back and check on the assumptions that we had made in the model, and we changed the maps, and so we're in that process of changing that map. So it's important to involve the public because they're the ones that know when it floods. They're the ones that live there, their whole lives, so they're... They just have that, um, firsthand knowledge of what's happening actually out there. So we try to involve the public, and we come out to the council and communicate that it's happening prior to it, so that we can get the word out. Um, the area indicated on the map is where you can provide feedback for that, um, if our army... You see some little areas, they, those are areas that have detailed studies that have been done in the, uh, recently. So those are be, will not be included as part of this new watershed. Everything else is within issue. So anytime we're available, you can go to these meetings. Staff from the district is available one-on-one with their laptops to pull up a specific property and explain to you what the changes are happening. And if you agree or disagree, we're also available there to write the comment in for you. Um, and so it's, it's a good opportunity to make, um, district staff on a one-on-one case to explain to you what these new maps look like. On the next slide, I can explain kind of what the colors are. It looks like you might have it in black and white. And so, I think you can provide me, uh, I don't know, a day or... Yeah, so that, that, so that pink zone, that is the 1% annual chance, or what we used to be called 100-year flood zone. We might be able to weigh it from common to 100-year and 500-year, you know, like, but that's a 1%. Uh, the purple is the X zone with a flood depth less than one foot. And the gray zone is the .2%, which would used to be called 500-year flood zone. On the next slide, we'll show the results. So these are the results by building counts, not by parcels. So if you go to the next slide, you see Town Creek has, um, no change from low to high. Those are the important ones because that, those means that they're gonna need flood insurance. However, I would, I would encourage participation even though this shows a low count because, for example, for the entire Lake County, there's 3,411 properties that are going to see a change. So even though by building, the number might be low, there might, there is gonna be an increase on, on profit. So I would encourage to still be, well, use the lead numbers. The next slide is multiple points slide. So this one has the, our virtual room. And I do have flyers with QR codes for this website on, on, and they're going to be... We didn't have a layer that shows a way for increase and reading for decrease. There's an explanation on how to get to that. There's a presentation that's what we're gonna be on this meeting that goes into what we need to doing these maps. And actually during that meeting, the consultants, engineers, that did the maps will be available there for questions. So if there's any technical questions or anything, then that, this is the moment. So I'm encouraging you to go to this virtual room, um, to look at, to look at, um, at what the maps are going to look like. And then the final slide shows the, when the flood review meeting is happening, it's on July 1st. We brought some other children, this calm, you know, school building. There's a meeting at 2:00 PM for local officials, and then one at 5:00 for the public. And so again, in this meeting, you'll be able to provide comments. You know, you might look at the maps and you can see, oh, this flood zone should connect over here. It looks like we might have missed a covert or something. Or you can see it and say, okay, this area has never flooded. It is a low area, um, or is the height, and basically this doesn't make any sense. So, or this has been filled, and so it shouldn't be considered as here. So that's the moment to make those comments. And to hand out these flyers. And I'll take any questions?
So this is to replace the 100-year flood zone? Do you get what you're saying?
Well, yeah, they, um, in, in, in just, in referring to the flood zones, they wanna call it the 1%, the 1%. Because it's a, a 1% yearly, right, the annual chance of flood. And not the 100, you know. It just, people think that when we say 100, that's not the flood, you know, every 100 years. And that's not true, because it's a 1% chance every year that's gonna flood. And so... Any other questions? I hope to see you there, Anthony. At 2:00 PM for council and 5:00 AM for the vote. I appreciate the time, Kevin. July 1st.
It's, um, on the back of the...
Yes.
Thank you so much. So we got, um, just another, well, her, which was talking about the, the stuff, is, did you see this, how they expedited their, um, BMAP? We, BMAP for each set of systems? Which means if you used to have 10 years, they're seeing now it's taking less than 10 years. And 90% of the stuff, at the time, that happens. People might get a little, so that is, that's coming, it's coming quick.
Is that from that same studies?
This is by the DEP.
So it's by the same?
Right. Everyone's back in the shell, they're more than go with it.
Got it.
But the good news is, is that now the state is asking for us to include these costs in our assessments.
cities that would like to comp hang and take away the fun. Um, set up a TV, get the internet, put a vote, leave, we'll give you the scrolling results. You guys can still hang out here, you know, drive to Bronson and get the results or you can stay at home and watch it from your phone or your, you know, your computer. So that is the give and take. Another thing too is, um, if you look at the price sheet, which is like yellow.
Yeah.
So you're saying when you leave your, we will, ones that appear will know the results when you leave the steps.
When the polls close at seven and the last voter's left, maybe it's seven oh five, because we have to let that last voter leave before we let them again to go in. Once the clerk gets the machine shut down and rolling, she can announce the results for election today.
Here.
Because a vote by mail will be in our office. You guys only had, I think, five ballots, you know, so autograph's not gonna have a ton of vote by mails. So, um, and they, unless it's what she all do by close races, so vote by mails really do matter. Because when you have six people on the ballot and there's two people up and you all each get drawn, um, the price sheet, so this year you paid two fifty. I did reduce the price from three hundred to two fifty, um, for this year, pay two fifty. Now, the price will be a little bit more because you're using machines. However, if you look in the top yellow, I am cutting up right for two years of the cost of the equipment. So you're getting half of whatever else is banned. Autograph is the only city I'm offering this to. Besides Invisi Yankee Town with their sharing of machines. So for two years at a minimum, I'm promising you to reduce the half price. So instead of six hundred dollars for machines, which includes auto machines, voting machines, electronic check stations, instead of six hundred, it would be three hundred. Your total out of the door will be five twenty-two versus two fifty. And then poller fees would be whatever you would want to pay the worker. So we would not pay your workers, you still would pay your workers. Um, and then you would reimburse me for any costs I had. So for every envelope and piece of postage for this five vote by mails, you'd have whatever I paid. So the postage is ninety-seven cents an envelope and we set five ballots, it'd be five times ninety-seven cents. So if you look or you have the itemization out, now obviously postage will be going out July first and I will be going up again January first. So it is an estimate, you know, on the postage, so, um. So yes, you are double what you pay from two fifty to five twenty-two, but you're getting someone with, one with experience and someone that is gonna provide trust in the process. And not saying there's not trust here, there might be a number of trust elections. I mean, you know, I don't know, I'm not saying there's not trust, um, but it's just something, I'm not pushing on you, you're your own town. You can continue doing what you're doing, so if you want to continue doing what you're doing, that's fine too. Um, this is just something that, and just for a matter of before you ask questions, Invisi has a friend who before, I just got back from Cedar Key, they were with before. Uh, I met with Chief Lionel Wolston, we're gonna have a second meeting to discuss more, because it was kind of a shock, you know, coming in and saying all these things. Um, Bronson doesn't have elections next year, but they all have other, yes, they wanna do it. Um, so, um, in all reality, I have a feeling the majority of the, um, Yankee Town, I don't know, because I'm, I've seen them in another few weeks. But I have a feeling they will go along with it, but I don't wanna push, I don't wanna speak for a council before I talk to them. So, um, I can't guarantee you, but I have a feeling that the majority of the candidates will go with it. Um, it's a one-year deal. If you try it one year and you say, no way, we can afford it, the two hundred fifty dollars extra is way too much, you know, and it wasn't worth it when I counted our votes. Um, we're only about ten counting, then that's, that's fine. Um, so it's, I'm not here as a county official pushing myself on your city or your town, sorry, losing city. Um, but I'm just here to offer service. If you want it, great. If you don't, then Miss, or Miss Lynn just has to do it all. So I did provide you last minute this spreadsheet. This, I, because in your packet, I provided you last year's agreement, twenty-five, and this year, next year's agreement, twenty-six. This breaks it down, what are the differences between the twenty-five agreement and the twenty-six agreement? So just opening a few, responsibility of election, this year it was a shared responsibility. Next year, it would be shared responsibility, the supervisor would take on more responsibility. Um, qualifying to manage by the town this year or be managed by the town next year. So it kind of gives you a diagram of what are the differences. We don't have to do this, but one, one thing I do propose is having the election happen at church, how to bring that to church, but we don't have to. If y'all feel like this is a day being compliant and you wanna keep having to vote here, I'm fine without preceding elections. Another thing, in two years, when we have a presidential government's primary in March, you could combine your, your, your election with us, which is two weeks earlier. And you wouldn't have to pay anything for the election because you'd just be tagging on the ballot and we would just take the whole process over. Two years, we have the president on ballot again, sorry, twenty-eight one elections again for president. So in twenty-eight, we would, I would come to you ahead of time, so you draw the ordinance to change today, but you'd move your election up two weeks, qualify it up two weeks. And then you would add all that to our ballot and that way you'd save a lot of money. My ultimate goal one day, if I'm still around, to begin elections, is to eventually get all the cities on our election altogether, so you save a lot of money. But I don't wanna move too fast, we, we slowly have to manage the city, city, I don't know if y'all know this, but when Mr. Moreno was city park, we, town park, we didn't do enough of elections. So we were not involved at all. They handled, y'all handled elections all by yourself. Same thing with most of the towns and cities, I mean, we were hands-off, all we provided the cities was a pretty secure. But citizens of company, they want me to help them, you know, I mean, and not necessarily agree, but, um, people want our help, they want us to be involved. Um, hopefully because they trust us, you know, hopefully because we, we know we gave trust in the process. Um, so now I'm gonna, um, let you ask questions.
I think you explained pretty good the, uh, the, I see a bit of, drastic, you're complex, I mean, people in town. Just because there is a lot of conflict, most of the people just, sometimes it seems that they just jump onto this, things grow up, everything's just, just to have something to run the campaign. Yeah, run the campaign on, and this could be, uh, this definitely will be a way of eliminating that part of it. Okay, anyone else have any questions?
The only thing I would definitely wanna know from a label perspective, quite, you know, the same, and, um, you know, basically wanna roll off and do an ordinance?
That's, um, I'll be honest, Mark, you get the city attorney for Invisi, Cedar Key and Chief Lemon, and he's gonna be driving the ordinance. So that's why I'm coming around early, I'm not waiting till January next year to pop this on you guys. I know it's gonna be a process, I don't expect you to sign the agreement tonight, um, I know you wanna do it right and that way you keep the town out of any lawsuits. So, you know, you don't need, the only thing maybe you wanna do tonight is say, hey, we wanna get it before with the ordinance. Um, so Miss Megan has time to work on an ordinance.
Yeah, I've seen this done successfully in, in Miami, Crescent City and, and there's, and surrounding cities have gone to supervisor, I think it's been great for them. I have a simple ordinance from them, so I don't think it would take much, um, but if the board does wanna give me some direction on bringing that back to the line, we can approve it then. I mean, to do it.
Yeah.
I think you should, you. Thank you so much.
And I'll order everything to go, so you need to come back. Don't let my. Oh, one last thing, don't forget, June, July first, your form, ones are due to Commission of Ethics. Hopefully you've already done that, but if you haven't, you used to have to turn the application into our office, they changed it up two or three years ago. And you now have to go to the Commission of Ethics website and file that with them. July first is the deadline, but you do have an extension till September first. But don't, don't wait until September first, I'm unsure if Miss Megan's gonna remind you tonight.
Yeah, I was thinking it was two thirty, so you gave it an extra day.
Yeah, and it's difficult, you have to go on there, you have to click the button, it sends you a password, it's hugely pretty quick, um, it goes to your email. You should have got notification about this, unless you get junk mail. And when you become a new council member, you should do one brighter way. As you leave office, you have like thirty to sixty days to do one too. So my office is totally out of the form one business, we used to be the ones that we followed with, but that was a blessing, we don't do that anymore. However, it's bad for you guys to do it online. Same thing when you work for office, you could do it online too, that was not my new one, that was legislators. But, um, just wanted to remind you guys, when you come into office, you gotta do one. When you run for office, you gotta do one, and you have to do one annually, and you have to do one when you leave office. So just keep that in mind as a council, you know, because a lot of people don't, they're not gonna call you up and say, hey, um, Ms. Bora, I heard you're not on the council anymore, you gotta do a form one F. Uh, they don't do that, they expect you to know these things, and a lot of cities don't know that, so I just wanna make sure that they're aware of that, so.
I just definitely still a little bit.
I'm sure she didn't. I found the, the agenda, you know, that he sent us, I found that much work, again. It, it, I, I have to actually, I have to work on it every day, every day.
Okay, so we, uh, perhaps, uh, maybe.
Good evening, council, I want to say first, welcome to the new town clerk. And, uh, second, believe that you've done an amazing, marvelous job in this town where you've got this, right now. So thank you for what you've done. Uh, I'm here to, well, basically, uh, find out what kind of show I need to go next, but what I'm looking to do. I'm looking to propose a vending lot here at three eleven Old Park Creek Ave, so you might know, but that's two town, you might drop by and you see it. It's basically, it's, it's kind of put itself in a sense that there's been over four hundred people that have come to visit this particular place. And I want to take it one step further, and make a commercial vending lot. The property is, is commercial, there's some proposals, um, with basically the least I have, the least I have a holder. And there's proposed or pictures of, of what the concept's gonna be like. These, I apologize, these two right here don't have the, the, but you just, you'll go scroll through and see the idea. The idea of the lot is going to be, it's all gonna be a completely mobile lot, there won't be no structure being built there, anything like that. We're going to have a short school bus, it's gonna be a baby flower shop, a homeless senior shop, it goes online YouTube show. We're going to add a vending chair there, currently it's gonna be the top of the box, it's coming down to do some testing, but, um. But basically I'll have another tool chair there, I'll be selling tools as new, larger items that we can resell, and store it and stuff like that. Um, I wanna make it to where, ultimately what I'm asking you to do is what steps I need to forward to the next to give power of our new pool of lot, powerful voting lot. There isn't existing powerful that was there. Um, now, what I wanna do in this lot is I wanna make it like an outdoor trading booth, if you will. I wanna have little vendors that can come there if you set up, maybe sell stuff on the thing, talking, whatever they want to sell. Now, obviously it's business for me, so I made a commission off of it, then bring, already bring people to town, give people something else to do. So on top of that, I'd like all the program of the city, for some of the citizens back in America City, the listeners, traffic to drive by, which are the, the place. I'd like all to live free of charge, and they come when you guys sign up, they then come down on the weekend, they wanna send their stuff, sell their stuff, which I think is like an art sale, basically. Uh, and obviously a lot happening right there on, on twenty-four. And so, like, they hopefully make a real income, you know, like, have them with their eyes on what they have to sell. But ultimately, just kind of like outdoor market lot is ultimately what it'd be. Um, and that, that's kind of where I'm, I'm wanting, finding what steps I need to do next. I just think with citizens for electric, they said they need to come to the council, find out what steps I need to do, permissions or whatever to. They said, once, once you guys are, are good with it, figure out whatever's going on there, then they'll go ahead and, I, you told it, it's a million, and then they'll go ahead and install power. Um, I don't know what steps I need to go from now, sure, I can run a generator on the lot, you know, I could do that. The problem is I have an interest, second of all, if, if I was going to run a generator, it'd be out by the river, it would scare me next to the horse and Mr. Sin's heartbeat lot. That's why I'm asking for power to be on the lot. Something else I've done, is I've already raised enough money to, to price it, since all the entire, both sides of the, of the lots of the neighbors on, on the residential side. They won't be bothered by the, by the parking area they have had there. Now, do I intend that parking area to ever be filled up? Probably not, maybe on a random or something like that, but it's just more so another thing, I'm not even doing kayaks or canoe or nothing. Sorry, I'm a big dreamer, I got a lot of places that I go for, but, um, I, I just need to, I need guidance from you all to tell me what I need to do next to get the power to go to. Direct north of the pole, I know I have the expectancy of the pole, but there, I have the specs or whatever, whoever's spec. I just need to know what direction you can do in power lot, so I don't sit there and bother the others with my loudspeaker trying to stay cool during that. So that's, that's what I need.
Generator unless it was silent.
Yeah, well, firstly, I think that kind of going to have silent, why is it only a trial hour? Well, yes, now, so that's basically what I'm here to be, to look for guidance as to what I can do from you all to you all to simply chat some, you know, with loud. The address is three eleven Old Park Creek Ave, so therefore the entrance, if you saw them out there, would be coming right off of that, right off three, um, three eleven Old Park Creek Ave. Um, there's no curbs really in there, so it's completely handicap accessible, if you like the real route. Again, this is basically just a vending lot, you know, and it's gonna be something else that people are gonna be able to come by and stop. You know, I wanna go right away to the town, a lot of people notice a lot of drawing, the country is now, I like to do everything right, you know? Same kind of house, you know what I mean, same kind of house, uh, produce stand, I wanna sell lemonade, I wanna literally get a hot dog stand, have hot dogs there. Capitalize on the traffic going to Cedar Key, same thing with the, with the tourism, since the kayaks and the news and, and stuff like that, and so. That's basically what I'm here, I won't try and fuck yours off, but that's, that's.
Is it gonna have access to twenty-four or?
No, no, I, I actually could have spits up along twenty-four, to deter anybody from pulling up inside of twenty-four, to go onto the lot, one, one with the pull in. And actually, there's actually, this is a part of preparing that lot, it would be three slots up front along with the handicap slot. So that, that, you know, obviously have all, all, you know, measured out as far as, you know, what the specifics would be. I just, you know, I don't want, I don't wanna make a danger for anybody stopping on twenty-four seat, I want them to pull in, pull in the power lot, not shoot traffic on Old Park Creek Ave, you know what I mean? And, uh, I want it to be right, I wanna do everything the right way, and I need, I need, I need to help you guys, what I need to do just to get the power lot, all of that, and that's for you.
Ten seconds, uh, popular, uh, town street, we need a, uh, in action from the wheelchair.
Uh, that would, the access is off, uh, there's quite a few permits to be required. Uh, I've quickly made a conversation in the past already, I told you, you need to get a set of drawings, time, show you all these details.
That's what I brought to you, I mean, I just, this, these are, these are drawings, these are pictures of those areas. Right, well, it's drawings.
So you're gonna have to send the blueprint drawings, time, site plan, show them everything, all the details.
I have the measurements, I'm sure you have the measurements, I, I meant it, I.
Okay, that's right, because you got it, but you gotta get that on, on the blueprints and show them, you have the certified drawing, and submit that in for an application for a permit. And then we, we can pursue that, uh, probably what you just put in the text.
Well, I know I'm not any sunshine, also I've come to be at this stuff, I just, I wanted to do everything right, I just wanted to draw these drawings. So you're telling me I have to hire an engineer to come up there and draw this out? I have all the measurements of the block, I mean, I've drawn out, so if you want that, next day, that's no problem, come to the next meeting. But I didn't understand, what type of drawings do I need?
But you don't bring it to the council, this isn't the job of a.
This was such a floor, let's, so they said.
Four, four doesn't run the town, I'll function it, okay, they got their rules, we got ours. You take, you turn in your application with the set of drawings, apply for a permit, and then we can start the process, I told you.
Yeah, I know, and I, I had a permit here, I had the drawings, that's why I'm coming to you. So now you're saying I need to come in, you know, and basically give you guys just drawings with measurements on it, and this, this permit went fifty dollars, and then you guys can tell, since a floor electric, do, did it turn?
It's not like a turn.
Uh, I'm trying to.
You gotta turn in a set of drawings and apply for a permit, and you can start going through the process of permitting. And then it's just, you know, all that's, you know, mandatory requirements.
So what are the requirements, that's what I'm trying to figure out?
Turn in the process and with application, and then it'll go through it. No, we're, we're gonna spend time chasing this down until someone puts down a deposit for a permit. There's no reason for the town to sit here and chase these things down until somebody puts in for a permit.
And you realize I did raise eighteen hundred dollars for this town for the festival, am I?
We do.
It could be, you know, a thousand people watching right now.
That's right, hello, everybody, I want, I wanna thank you, I wanna thank Travis for all of his help, but we are not gonna be putting ourselves in a position to be sued by people in this town that, just because we're favoring somebody, how we can favor anyone, by you just tell us, we're gonna just issue this and send out a letter to the town, to, to the, uh, six of Florida power, the power to them. That's not how it's done, you turn in a permit application.
Yeah.
I'm just, turn in a permit application, then the process starts.
Okay, so, so not a terrorist name, it might paint it as soon as this meeting, or, or, new town clerk, as always, and then, and then, what, I put it out to the next meeting?
No, it's not.
A bunch of measurements that show not just handwritten, they're.
No, I was not, I, I just, I just wanna save less time on that.
No, I got.
This is a commercial application, so it has to be done by an engineer, all paperwork has to be done to all full specs.
So can I use your information to use for your report? Do you have the guy's number?
If you wanna call him next.
I would have a little tip, I would get that information from the, from the. I had to, I'm not gonna put his name out there. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I just, just, you have to, in that contact.
This is, like, I had to hire somebody, you gotta hire somebody, chance engineering paperwork, all the documents.
So, so, okay, so the town autograph requires me to have engineered plans for a vending lot, is that what you're saying?
If you're gonna open up something on the commercial piece of property in this town, yes, it's got every, it's got every, you know.
That, that's, that's, that's the rules of the town? Or I, I just wanna know who's, who makes that?
It's the state of Florida, I'm done, thank you for your possession, your, your presentation, and if you wanna proceed it, you should do this with an application for a permit.
Okay, so I got that basic permit, I'm gonna get the drawings and the shirt off with the, with the measurements on it, and then, then that should be fine, right? If it has the measurements on it, why do I have to be a certified, we're not gonna see your repeater still, so we're never, no. No, I'm wondering why I have a certified engineer, I can run a measure tape, and, and I'm, I'm pretty, it tells me, I don't know this.
And they, for, recognize you as a certified, how do you do it?
No, no, seriously, so, so I would say the Florida requires this, not us. Right, okay. I had a tower turn on, on a lot and, and, and trim, and I didn't have, because I would just say the same thing, I really see a little bit of, uh, yeah, okay, that's all.
But then you know that.
No, 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 because this is my time, we talked before, you said, I didn't do this on broad, right? And then I brought everything I thought you'd know, and then I, now you're telling me I need certified engineer plans.
Exactly the same thing I told you the other day in the office for your.
You said, right, John, and that's what I did. I thought, so you said, you told me, you need to have an idea of where the.
Was the park was. I'm not gonna sit here and carry on, just that, I'm not, I'm gonna clear you what you need to do.
I thought that's my idea.
This is not a process for the meeting and the media and all that stuff, this is a process being done for a permit process, and not here.
I'm so.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Do you don't mind even going to your engineer, after meeting?
I will, I'm, like I said, I'm gonna put my engineer in the middle of all this.
No, no, it's fine, well, you know, me, my stuff's not.
You're fine.
I'll, I'll get started next.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
I'll, I'll afford a text.
If you want to proceed it, proceed this, you gotta turn in for application for a permit.
No, that's no problem, I, I'll, I'll go find a certified engineer and we'll get it paid for, and then I, then we'll get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, old business, we're getting the number of the ticket. New business, um, this morning, a council member, he is not shown up again this meeting, so, uh, yes, we will presume that he is not gonna take the seat. And that we will open it up for a, a letter of interest for this season, okay?
Yep.
All right, um, reading of the ordinance from the board.
So this will be the first reading of ordinance, it's actually twenty twenty-five oh two, this is listed as twenty twenty-five oh three, Water Bureau East. This is an ordinance to town in Autumn Creek, Florida, requiring resident participation in Quack Sasa Water and Waste Water Cooperative by establishing water service and when available, water, waste water service, repealing prior conflicting resolutions and ordinances and establishing effective date. Um, and this goes back to, um, I believe, the DDP request of, um, Quack Sasa Water and Waste Water Cooperative. Um, basically just asking each of the cities that are, cities or towns that are members of the cooperative to, um, kind of ensure that, that they will have a customer base and they will have, um, individuals working within that water, waste water in the respective members' service areas.
And that's already been existed back in sixty-four, it was part of the grant that was given to the town, and the water system, and first was fire, uh, three one, those two waters, you know, pertinent. And that's not being enforced, but it is something that the DDP is requiring as part of the funding to do this process, this project. And once they want to play better games, they're gonna have to do these things. Administration? Um, is it the other selection?
Nope. And it's on the mail, I'm on it.
Welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you, Jason.
Look forward to it, it's been a night opener for the first week already, so, I'm sure I've got a lot to, lot to ask and verify as I go forward, but I look forward to it.
You might have to came over this.
Thank you.
Okay, um, just a few things else to put in.
My manager's doing a good work, we're having an issue with the, uh, new software, they now decided that they're very struggling on it. But they disclosed that the two things that we need above everything else are receipts and usage reports they can't give us. So right now, they're on hold until we can, they can get that resolved for us, or we're gonna have to find one that will work with us.
Well, why are we having so many problems?
Believe me, to begin with, eight months ago, they just sort of said, here, learn.
I thought we were getting new system.
It didn't begin, so it happened until they decided, when I made the call, said, can you give us some money back, or give us some training? Does someone come here? No, no one does, okay, so we're gonna, we got people to talk to us, they, yes, they did the training, and then, I had, where, where, if someone pays ahead. The reports, if you get, will not show that they paid ahead. You have to, the reports, you will have to create one report that shows what, what the pay did, is a path to burn. It only shows that, that they have to get out of there, going to three different other programs to get to show where they.
Not you, your front.
Yeah, so if, if right now, they're working on it, but we need your receipts, report, and we need your usage report, because those, the, the usage report, we have to give someone else. We have to get to, at the mighty third insurance purposes, I mean, give it through the auditor, so those reports every year, I've got them.
No, I did it, I'm just getting way too, it, it is, I'm being able to pay on one.
Well, I mean, we didn't know, we didn't know that what we had, but it won't, in the back in, in our office, the cash reports will never match what we took in.
Oh, that's nice.
And that's, that's not acceptable from the unanswered situation, because that questions the integrity of this office.
Yeah, and we're not gonna, we're not, I sorry, that, I.
So you, they're working on their end, we still, they have made, give us the old system back, we. Leadership overage, yeah, so it just, right now, we didn't know this back then. So like we said, they were transparent on that and the usage report, so, um, that's what we're standing on now, um, trim is coming out, and so is the budget. So is there anything this year that you want to put in the budget? Please give me this, give me this, but this, but this is budget, I'll start making surprise. Um, you know, I know we talked about, if you see the lights, district lights on third, so we'll, we'll get, but if you can give me anything else, just let me know, so I can start making process, put it in the budget.
Yes, I think all I want to appreciate it.
Okay, Jared.
Can I ask, are early meetings having to see normal software?
It depends on some, yes, it depends on, these are all cloud-based programs now, so instead of just being an internet-based program, which is, it's controlled by the internet. But you still have control of your data, when you go to cloud, everything is uploaded to cloud and you have no control over your data. Which is where we're finding out the reports, I mean, we could go all day long, but we have no control on what we are allowed to get back.
Does Invisi, do they have an online, is it a, a, for their board?
Enlist us.
Why don't you talk to them?
I'm talking to them, well, we talk with the board, Cedar, and, and Chief Lemon, and Cedar Key, and Ben's friends, the, now, I'm gonna see if you have it and one our budget, we thought.
Okay.
So.
That's a problem, for me, the pricing, you start switching software, you wanna make the right choice.
I know.
So who, at this point.
Find out who has the less problems.
Right, that's, that's the key, it's not a matter of system, and no problem.
Exactly, so, you know, hey, we won't see those reports, you know, and the old system will give it, if someone makes a, an other average, you can see, you can see it on the receipt. That I can hand to them. You can see it in their file. And it's just one click from a file that I get down here or there, five different sets. So.
I, I, I said, we can come up with something ourselves, like an Excel or, you know, it wouldn't be that difficult to do. Or an Access. I just think we could offer our own Access database with it and make a, you know, but once again, to reinvent the wheel, get it back to where you are, so.
That much trouble with the power program?
No, you would think that it'd be very, very simple and just, you know, be able to buy it and go with it. Every, every system seems to have a different issue with the software or their own software.
And this is an upgrade with the same company that they had, the old program. So I don't know enough about it.
Surprise. I'm beginning to deal where we buy a little raised system platform and then they try to force this upgrade because, you know, we need more things. No, they, they really don't have that. We're going to sell it and some of it by thousand.
Well, it's almost like they quit supporting the old ones, but now they're forcing the new one. And it's that, well, now you don't have the benefits you had of the old one.
Had it that long, then it's become obsolete.
You know how it's just like computers, everything changes quickly.
Yeah, we do. So basically that's it in a nutshell. If we were going to fix it down, there's no support. And this is what you got to go to. Here it is. It's the same. Platform. So.
We'll get there. We just got to figure out the right one. The big issue is paying online. Is that, is that, I, I, nobody said that.
I just love to pay online.
Okay, okay. We'll keep on that way. Because that's probably something we can figure out. I would.
Well, the, no, there's, there's a lot more. You could be in, in a second plan, the federal plan.
Yeah, that's.
It costs a swingboard to put it on our own than to have it incorporated in the software program where they're third party. So if someone gets hacked, it's on them.
No, I, I.
Yeah. I, that part I didn't check to make. No, I agree. There's not one that I love it.
There's a lot of compliance issues.
Yes. Especially when you have people's credit cards.
Well, yeah, no, I get that. I get that a hundred percent. I just. Bullshit. Big one.
All right. So that. Uh, what is on it is, is the same water is, um, that the system doesn't put in, just walk itself out. It's not, not, not the workflow that it does, like it should. Back pressure, we got too much of a thing. It's actually busted a couple of valves now because the pressure in the tanks are too high. Are causal.
Well, thank God for all the rain in the past.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, we, we committed everybody on, I committed to trying to pursue getting clean water. We've been working on that. Our system that we have, that we put in last year, it is working. But this system that we, that we rely on, the policy is not working. Um, I want to pursue. The company that put it in doesn't know how to fix it. They don't know what to do to how we make it work. Um, so we're, um, they're relaxed. They keep relying, they keep going back to the company that we used to filter them briefly last year. And, and for solutions and how to fix it. They have come up with a solution and how to fix it.
But how much does it cost?
Um.
Some huh?
Yeah.
If we just put it in, there's no.
No, no, this is, the system's putting four years.
Four years.
Four years. That system's, that's smart. Actually, I don't know. Only years ago now. Doesn't exist. Yeah, it was right four years ago. Um, it is, um, but it's probably fifty thousand dollars. To change out all the media to, to, to give us knowledge to work from this area. And we changed out the equipment, heads and power balance and stuff. Want, um, we have funds for our insurance payer to prepare the water. They can use for this, um, so they won't have to come out of a budget. But, um, I'm committed to negative work and still fix our. This system is supposed to take out the little fine things that get through the, the one that takes up a wall of this. And then that, that little bit of media is just not working for us. It's left behind. We want to trace the mind of the trees. It's called the ground beach. Um, it's caused a, um, discoloration of the water. It's bad at the water. Um, it's not, uh, it's basically what we have now, basically replace the, the blue tower that we had in it that was falling apart, fell apart. You should have climbed to the top of it, you know, higher. That system's working, but the new system is what we rely on already. Not the newest system, but the system prior to that was relying on that policy. So this new brand's going to be able to fix that policy and follow it and pursue on with it.
I just want to be a week each again, to make it, to, to get together.
Oh, I agree. Uh, I mean, that's, I'm going to come out of the budget, so I feel that if you want to push forward and keep the storm, you can do this. As you. I will, you will do that. Right. That's, that's the water. It's a mess and we are working. Um, okay, the public announcements, uh.
Did you say maintenance for public safety?
Well, public safety, uh, maintenance, yeah, I'm sorry. Jump out of the mission. It's good to talk about water. It's been on my heart this month. Um, the maintenance is, um, it's kind of low. It's been like low again every day or it's not. At least every other day. A little one day. Very much for that. Now, needs and out of this and that. Somebody would have changed some, like trees falling apart. You know? Well, um, oh, thank you. All right. The, um, um, we'll see if we can get somebody to come and change all that. Uh, is it, you, you still wait for that or?
I used to be one.
This, or you, you make some equipment, or is it that, you can, tell me that?
I don't mind helping, but I don't have a chainsaw. Yes, sir.
But, um, that's maintenance, public safety, uh.
Did the E O C have a hurricane meeting?
As in, how?
I haven't notified any of them.
We need to, last year, we kind of got mad at us because we weren't cooperating with the 10th all meetings and kind of mad at us. Uh, or they kind of.
I attended the, I, I did.
He is, uh, he's not over there. I think he was just necessarily after the hurricane.
John, yeah.
So, um.
I need, I need to get it.
We follow him on it. It's, I think it's due a month in right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's due a month now. And then, of course, as any storm approaches, it's going to fall over, fall over. And, um, when we do talk, don't want, um, I like to give, give you those things that, um, uh, yeah, our storms come, we got, we got to start making some plans. Come on, get with it, at least get involved in that meeting.
Yeah.
Happens, because, uh, I'll make sure you know, uh, the wish list and prior to storms that you're ready. Like we were last year.
I still have one bottle of water, one, one thing of water for both of us last year. The water I got.
There's, there's a couple of cartons. You kind of pull, like, do you need one of those, some of these, the hardwood notebook?
Yes, that's one of them. Still in my pocket for the regular, actually.
He said it's been ten years. I see. Here it is used. All right, so, um, that's coming all the departments. Um, the announcements for the children's table, you stop, Jersey, you want to turn it?
Watch him. Um, children's table will be in our district on a to be determined day at 1:30 P M. Um, the Huacasa Water and Wastewater Meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 18th. Tomorrow at 1 P M at 510 Third Street at Insignia Key, 3265. That's all I have on that.
All right. Okay, uh, must you guys?
I'll take the rest for you if you're running again. That's right.
Back to the, uh, we got it. Yep. All of the other companies, I think you know. All right. Doc, 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 or is it, is it doc?
See you later.
You got it. All right. Yes. Now, here.
Miss Panda, uh, do you have anything to do? I would just request that, that, uh, Travis gave me. I, I know that package. Yeah, that's on part of our package. That was something he handed out to us. It was him and the, the, yeah, the, the.
Then. Yeah. I'll send it to you. I, I know that you have it in your, in your, in your. Because I saw.
Have my heart with that. I just. I, I'm giving you. I don't rush, couple days to, and I'll find out. I'll pay. I mean, I know he's trying to put that, but I'd like to see.
Right.
There's nothing, no, the barriers are nothing. The security. That's all. All right.
I will, I will follow that up.
Rex.
Because I know, I know there is one.
Yes, sir.
I'll let you know soon.
Nice meeting you, Jason.
Nice meeting you.
You'll see me around.
I hope so. I'm here.
Yes, sir.
I'm here eighth, noon, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Actually, 7:30, about 8:30.
Richard. He needs to help with anything? Okay. Yes, you do. Not happy. Y'all are very welcome. Thank y'all. Let's hit this thumbs up. Get it up to a hundred. Mr. John Cook, what's up, buddy? Somebody wasn't getting their way in there. And, uh, he wasn't liking that. Have a good one.
Good night.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You're welcome, George. Yes, Stacy. And it's sad to see that, you know, I'm not trying to start no drama or nothing, but, I mean, you have to go through the right, proper ways to get things done, you know? And if I was doing that, I'd have to, I'd, you know, have to go through the same thing. Right? And Zim wasn't backing down, you know? Me and Zim don't see eye to eye on things, but, hey, we, we get along. And I seen Travis at the store before I stopped by, uh, on the way here. And we didn't have no problems. We don't have no problems being around each other. We didn't say nothing to each other. Um, Travis was getting mad, from my opinion, what it looked like. Follow the rules. That's right, Stacy. Trenton is like twenty-five, thirty minutes from here. And he drives all the way here. And he does not own the property that he's putting Two Town 2.0 on. Ms. Lois owns the property. She's a retired bus driver that I've known for twenty years. And she doesn't live in Florida anymore. She has property in Florida, obviously. If you look up property appraiser and see who owns it, you can go there and see us, see the name on it. I'm not going to put her full name out there, but. And I knew her father or grandfather that lived in the house that was there that was tore down ten or so years ago. Before Travis was even part of any of the thing to do with Otter Creek. Yes, you're going to have to re-watch this. You're going to love it, John. Especially when, uh, if you got to skip to where Travis started talking, he wasn't getting his way and he weren't liking it. Yes, it was good. Yeah, yeah, it was. He's over there. Riled up over there at his truck. Over there, right there. And then he wanted to bring, oh, what about your, um, your inspector or whatever? Let me get his number. Yeah, well, it was, I might make a little short out of it. Awesome. We got it up to a hundred and two thumbs up. I got some kind of like super gift thing now with a diamond. I, uh, YouTube sent me an email the other day and it was, uh, saying something about gifts. If they send you a gift, you can win a thousand dollars diamond. I don't know if y'all can see that. And I imagine all the other YouTubers got it too. So. But. I ain't sure. I don't think there's even enough parking over there to do something like that. Nobody's going to want them parking on their property. It's a lawsuit. If somebody gets hurt and you park on their property, they can sue the people. Sue the town. A lot of crap. You heard Zim. That's right. Engineer, you need it to be engineered. You can't just draw it up yourself.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm not worried about that. I just, I want it to the right way. There's not a good, good engine, so.
Always happy to support Thomas. Thank you so much, President. Ninety-nine. Ninety-nine, ninety-nine, super chat. Thank you. Thank you very much. Two thousand people in the chat. Dang. No, I'm just joking. There's a hundred and sixty-five in the chat. Let's, let's check out the park. Thank you so much. Oh, there's the tree Zim was talking about. Branches down right there. See if I can't help out with that. Great job, Thomas. Thank you. Thank you for the five dollar super chat. I try my best. Yes, thank you very much. Hello, Rebecca. Excuse me. How Levy County works is, the only way you can put a pole in is if you're building a house there. Tear the old building down, then you're building a house, and you can live in the camper for six months. But since Otter Creek took over, I don't know how, exactly how it works, but when Levy County run it, the only way to get a pole with the power is if you was building something there. And it sounds like he's just putting booths and tents up and stuff. Maybe, you know, you gotta have bathrooms and a septic tank. I guess you can get like a porta potty. I mean, it'd bring people to Otter Creek and maybe the town can make something off of it, taxes. Um, I don't know how all that would work. Or it just might be like having a store up there in Otter Creek, you know, something similar to that. So, how's everybody doing? Like environmental people come in. Zim had to have all that done, he had to come in and test the dirt and all kinds of stuff, because my friend had requested, our records requested all that. Because people didn't think Zim got that done. And he got it done. Hello, little dude. Hello, Rebecca. I'll be praying for your husband. Yes, hit the thumbs up button. No, Jeremy wasn't here. Neither was Raddis. Just me, Don, Travis, the councilman, Ms. Belinda. And Ms. Belinda did retire. She, uh, and the new guy, Jason, is the clerk. Yeah, he was irritated, you could tell. Let's re-watch it, and you can see, he was getting irritated. Zim was getting irritated. There's probably about five or six people here. Two speakers, you'll just have to re-watch it. The landowner will have to provide insurance. Ms. Lois is the owner of that land. She doesn't live in Florida. She lives up north somewhere. Yes, she is a retired school bus driver. If you look it up on Property Appraisers, you can see that for yourself. Oh, so he's not in the United States, huh? He's left, huh? She lived here for a while. She used to park the bus right there along the road on her property, was not in the road. Alright, well, tell you what. Travis has had this old truck here for a long time. Ever since I've known him, and I've known him for over ten years. Probably more like twelve, maybe eleven or twelve. He does not own that property. Look up Levy County Property Appraiser and you can see who owns it. Or you can call the Levy County Courthouse, he said the address in the, in there when he was talking to Zim, so you can get the address of the property and find out exactly who owns it. He doesn't own it, I just looked it up the other day. He might be renting it. If he rents it, doesn't mean it's gonna get put in his name, obviously, y'all know that. Zim own it.
Thomas, you have a great night.
Yes, ma'am, you too.
It was really good seeing you.
Yes, ma'am, you as well. That's more like it, he's renting it, he doesn't own it. And I'm not sure how that works to try to put, um, a business there, because he admitted he was gonna make profits, obviously, you know, renting things out. Which is nothing wrong with. He went in there, he's talking to Zim and... Boy, that AC was kicking in there, that new AC they got, works well. No insurance, no go, hey, Thomas, hello, hello? I'm glad they used my idea about parking. Um, there is really no parking there, I don't know how you can even put something there, there's no parking. Oh, most definitely, he is crying. See you later, Mr. Rex, yes, sir. Hello, Marla. That property is not even a half acre, I mean, it might be a half acre, maybe. And I don't know if you could put things there, it has to be a certain amount of acreage, um... Oh, man, no. So... He's talking to Zim now. Some people won't like this, but I think he's trying to... Yes, that is him. And Mr. Zim. And Travis. Yes, you're right, John, I'm pretty sure you have to have parking. Can't park on the side of the roads. Remember, Jeremy will tow the vehicles and then park on people's property. He's just trying to get favors. And Zim's not working with the favors, and he brung up, "I raised eighteen hundred dollars for this town." What a way to throw it in our faces. Bye, Ms. Belinda. Bye, Mr. Jason. Yes, sir. Threw that right up in Zim's face, "I raised eighteen hundred dollars for this town." What's that got to do with it? Didn't you do that out of the kindness of your heart? Good buzzers up there, oops. Well, everybody's leaving. Well, Zim will just walk away from him, just like he, uh, told him, that's enough, he's done. As Travis was talking, because he didn't have to let Travis do that, Travis is not no speaker, nothing for the town. And it wasn't even during comment. He needed to put a comment thing in the book, in the box. Thank you, Mo. You're the best, y'all are the best. Right, Rebecca? My two-keyed truck here. Newer vehicles won't have to use, this is the ignition key, the crank it, and door lock key. My brand-new shirt, guess what? Um, package that from? Let me show y'all. Get out here. Let me show y'all what shirt I got, leave in the comments, what shirt do y'all think I have on? I want y'all, maybe y'all seen it when I first, uh, pulled it up. Everybody's gone. Excuse me. But yes, you gotta re-watch it, if you're in here late, you gotta re-watch it, um... Travis got a little upset because he wasn't getting his way. Um, you just gotta re-watch it, I think it was funny, um... Uh-oh, y'all already know. Let me see if here, if I can switch it around, where y'all? Boom! It's hard, my arms are short. Yeah! Storage Legends. I appreciate all the super chats, if I missed any, uh, and the super thanks, thank y'all very much. Y'all are a blessing to me. I just really don't know how to say it in words, y'all are, y'all are just awesome. It's, uh, an awesome feeling to have an awesome YouTube family like y'all. Suzanne, thank you. Gone, mate. Zim was walking, talking, humming, well, God. "I need to save up to buy shirts from Guapo Thomas Two Lees." Keep up the good work, thank you. I got merch now, I got, uh, merch store set up and a couple of my videos, they're in the link, I don't have it at the store when you go on my YouTube channel. You gotta go in the description of my last few videos, and the link is in there. Um, they're shirts, I got some bags, a little purse, coffee mugs, jackets, um, some cool stuff. Some designs that I've come up with, some, some designs that Mo have done, made for me. Um, some cool stuff, and I'm gonna get me some off there, mark my words. Thank you, Mo. I keep forgetting to talk about it in my videos. I wanna get John a shirt so he can wear around town and to the flea market and stuff, uh, and I want, um, shirts. But I'm not sure their size. So, if somebody could get their size for me, or I will message John and get their size, and I'm just gonna let them pick out the shirt they want off of there, and I will buy it for them. Anyways, we're fixing to be getting off of here, it's a little humid out here in Florida. We'll walk down here. John is an extra-large, I believe. Have a good night, see most at Two Lees later. I'm gonna shut my door. Does anybody have any reasonable questions they wanna ask me? I'll try to get them. If I miss it, you can type it back in the chat, chat's going pretty quick. Who was the lady talking? One was the water, Swannie Water Management, and the other lady was, uh, um, about the votes and stuff, letting them, letting her take over all the votes, the town will have nothing to do with the votes. And then, of course, most of y'all know Travis. I'm gonna flip y'all around and show you those big saw blade. "I'm going to bed, goodnight." Was, uh, water, yes. Ninety-nine JGF, there you are. You're my number-one hater. You, you, uh, talk a lot of crap about big people and large, and you need, eh, you know, you're picking on, picking on me, but let me turn this around, see, see me. It don't bother me, pal. Or lady, whoever you are. You're a hater, that's all you are. But I appreciate you watching because you're helping out. And all those comments, you could delete them if you want. If y'all go on there, y'all can see so many negative comments on there right now, I ain't even deleting them. I don't even care. Ignore the hate, take the high road. That's right, uh, you- Ignore the hate. Take the high road. That's right. Uh, you have seen all the comments I put nice to the mean ones. It's all good. They just helped my other of them. So that's what I got to say about that. Thank you, Mary. Yes, Stacy. He was saying some mean things. You can go in there and see. Probably deleted him. You know, cause I told him, I said I could just block him. And I can't see his comments. Y'all couldn't see his comments. So I, I ain't blocked him and he said some mean things, so, but I'll never meet this dude. And he will never say those things to my face. And what's sad is if 99 GT, GFT or whatever, if they're like an older person, that's even more sad because, you know, someone 60s, 70s, 50s, 60s, 40s, 50s, you know, saying some of the mean things that he said, it's pretty sad. Thanks, Mo. But it's getting dark here. I'm gonna get to the house. I appreciate all y'all. Ta ta, everybody. Time to watch the rerun. Yeah, John, you'll like it, man. And just for the record, I have never been copyright striked, cause I don't use other people's footage. I have copyright striked a few people because they use my footage and they're making fun of me using my footage. They use AI to alternate, to make fun of me and it was my footage, so I copyrighted the person two times. And there's another one out there. Taz, this is your warning. I think he has the skull finger, middle finger up, whatever. If you don't take the few videos or pictures of you have me, have of me down, uh, there's enough of there on there to do three copyright strikes. If you don't take that crap down, I'm gonna copyright strike you and they're gonna delete your channel. Three strikes, you're out. T A Z, Taz with a middle finger up. You know who you are, so hopefully you get told the message. No one is allowed to use my footage unless you ask me. And it depends who you are. I'm not being a butt head. It's my footage. I took the time out of my day. Use my equipment to video, not for someone else to use it. So if somebody uses this footage or takes it off there, that video of Travis or any of that, I will copyright strike you. Sorry. Ask me. I don't care who you are. I don't care who it is. Warning right now. I'm sick of it. I'm sick of everybody. I'm sick of it. So if you use any of this footage out here, you're getting copyright striked. I don't care if you like it or not. If you don't like it, move on. If you want this footage, if you wanted any of this, you should have came to the town hall. I'm sorry I be in a butt head. That's just the way it is. If I was to use a second, 10 seconds of Jeremy's footage or Raddis or any of theirs, I would get copyright striked so fast. And they wasn't, they wouldn't hesitate. Taking advantage of you, it is wrong. Most definitely it is. Well, I'm fixing to get off here. You think we can get the thumbs ups to 1:30? We're at 1:20 now. Slam that thumbs up button. If you don't mind. I've been thinking about doing some magnet fishing here the next day or two. Maybe me and Marty can go magnet fishing. Thank you, Cat Lady.